Calling to order, a special meeting of the Planning Commission of Dana Point, Monday, August 11th, 5:45 PM. Do we have a roll call? Do you have all commissioners present?
Yes, please let the record reflect that all commissioners are present.
Okay. We now move on to public comments. Any person wishing to provide public comments on the closed session matter may do so at this time. Are there any requests that are specific to just this closed session? We have one.
We have none.
City Attorney, do we call them up to?
Yeah, we have a closed session on the agenda tonight. It's conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation under government code, section 549, 56.9b1, and we have one case.
Okay. And is the speaker slip we have is specific to this closed session, or is it general?
We do not have any requests to speak on the closed session matter.
They have asked to speak on the closed session.
No, we don't have any. We don't have any requests to speak at this point in time. That's okay. So with that, we can go ahead and recess to closed session.
So at this point, I am now recessing the Planning Commission meeting to a closed City Attorney, do you have a report on this?
We'll do the report when we come back out of closed session.
Okay. So we are now leaving. We'll be back. Ladies and gentlemen, I am reconvening the Planning Commission meeting. Do we have a closed session report?
We have nothing to report.
Okay, we have nothing to report. We move on to, I'm adjourning the special closed session meeting. And we are now calling to order the regular Planning Commission meeting. I know this sounds confusing. Do we have a quorum? Do we have all commissioners present?
Please let the record reflect that all commissioners are present.
Okay. So I would like to ask Commissioner Whitaker to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We move on to approval of minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of July 14th, 2014. Do I have a, do I have any motions? Are there any additions or deletions?
I'll move the minutes, Chair.
Do we have a second?
I'll have.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We move to item number two, minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of July 28th, 2014. Again, additions or deletions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh. Point of order, I think you said July 14th. Did you mean July 28th?
Yes.
You're right. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of July 28th, 2014.
I'll second that.
Okay. We now move on to public comments.
We need to call the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain because I was asked.
Okay, so that motion.
We have one abstention.
Right.
We move to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comments section or on an agenda item is asked to complete a request to speak slip, which is available, pardon me while I do this, at, where's Denise? Will you raise your hand, Denise? Which is available from this beautiful woman here, okay. The completed, the completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commissioner's secretary prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. And any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for the public comment portion of the agenda. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Do we have any speaker slips?
There are none for public comments. There are none.
There are none? All right, thank you. We move on to the item F, F, item three, to the consent calendar. Do we have any requests to sleep, to, any requests for the consent calendar? Okay.
For the consent calendar, all you need is one motion unless there's a request to remove the item by either staff or the Planning Commission or the public. Denise, do we have any requests to remove the item from the public?
There are none.
Okay. So I would look for a motion for the consent calendar.
Chairwoman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now moving on to item number G, item four, which is public hearing. At this point, I will be recusing myself and passing, passing the chairmanship on to Vice Chair O'Connor. I live within 500 feet of the item that is coming up before you, and so have to recuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. While we're, we're waiting for the Chairwoman to leave the room, I'll take this moment to ask everyone to silence their cell phones. We don't want, you don't want to be that one person that their phone goes off and everybody's staring at you, so let's silence our cell phones. That includes commissioners, too. And then the other thing is just a point of order. If some of you came to the meeting last, our last meeting, and I have a no clapping, no booing, no personal attacks policy, so we have a public hearing and we want to, and we're all neighbors, and we want to be nice to each other, so let's just keep that in mind. It takes a great deal of courage to get up here and speak, so we don't want, we want to hear everybody. All right, so it looks like Chairwoman Claus has left the room, and now we can begin with item four. And this was continued from the regular Planning Commission meeting of July 14th, 2014, and it's for a tentative tract map, TTM 17751, coastal development permit, CDP 14-0008, site development permit, SDP 14-0006, conditional use permit, CUP 14-0005, and variance V14-0004, to allow the demolition of current structures on subject properties and construction of a new three-phased mixed-use project featuring 30,000 square feet of retail space on the ground floors and 111 residential condominiums on three levels above with two levels of subterranean parking on seven non-contiguous lots at 34135 Pacific Coast Highway, 24471 Del Prado, 34129 Pacific Coast Highway Phase 1, and 34137 Pacific Coast Highway, 24501 Del Prado Phase 2, and 34155 Pacific Coast Highway, I'm almost done, 24591 Del Prado Phase 3, located in the city's town center plan area. Is there a report on item four from our planning director?
Yes. Before I introduce Sima Kershi to Senior Planner to give the staff report, I do want to let everybody know that the minutes from the July 14th meeting are, you just approved them, so the Planning Commission has all of those comments in your minutes from that meeting that you'll be able to reference throughout this process. And for this evening, there will be an opportunity for the public to speak on the project, and I know, I did want to let you know that we did receive a call from a member of the public who indicated that they had an hour drive after the last meeting and didn't get home until midnight, and whatever, you know, you can do to keep the meeting moving along, I know that that particular person expressed that concern. So I just wanted to say that we have all of those previous comments, and it would probably be most beneficial to staff to hear comments on the new information that is presented this evening. And with that, I will introduce Ms. Kershi.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. The item for on your agenda is a continued hearing from your July 14th meeting. Today's presentation on the project will mainly comprise of the applicant presenting the revised design of the project, which they have worked on after getting input from the community and getting input from the Planning Commission at the last hearing. So there will be a presentation from the applicant, but before that, there will be a presentation from staff on reverse angle parking. There were a couple of questions that were specifically raised by the Commission, which is the new parking arrangement proposed on Violet and Amber Lantern Streets fronting this proposed project. And our Public Works Director, Brett Fowler, will be doing this presentation, so I'll just go and set up the PowerPoint and we'll start the reverse angle parking presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and those members of the public who've come to our meeting tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about one of the issues that was discussed at our previous meeting. A couple of our Commissioners at the previous meeting asked about what we call reverse angle parking or back-end parking. And so it's one of those things, let me see here if I can, let's see, oh, there we go. It's, can you, can you work it from, from up there for me, Sima? It's one of those things that, that has not been used in Dana Point to date, but it's one of the new kinds of parking programs that we in the business of trying to work on efficient and safe parking are quite knowledgeable about. We have, go ahead to the next slide. Reverse angle parking, my first experience with it was one of the trips we took to make sure we were going to be doing the construction on PCH in Del Prado with some of the least impact to our businesses was to go up and see the project that Boris Stramov worked on for Fisherman's Wharf up in San Francisco. And there, if you are familiar with the city and you're familiar with where the cannery is, okay, so if I click this one, it gets me to the next one. Great, it's now working. Thank you. If you're familiar with the cannery, there's reverse angle parking there in San Francisco. Reverse angle parking is a safer type of angled parking that our traffic engineering department is recommending. For this project, I would stress that the developer did not come in and recommend angled parking. This is in the public right-of-way, and we, the city, asked that they put in the angled parking to increase the amount of public parking within the town center area. Instead of pulling into a parking spot cars back into their spots, allowing them to make eye contact with oncoming traffic when exiting the parking space. So you can see from this diagram how does it work. Instead of traditionally heading into an angled parking space, you come up and step one is signal that you're going to make, you're stopping and, and you can put your right turn signal on, and then you come up and you back in in step two after stopping into the space. Now, this may seem harder initially than pulling in straight, but it's actually easier than doing parallel parking. Imagine parallel parking where you take step one, step two, and then you back in, and then you have to parallel park right up against the curb. The advantage with the angled parking is that you get more parking spaces per street distance. So what are some of the benefits of reverse angle parking? It's improved visibility and increased field of vision, and I'll show you a picture here in a moment of what I mean with that. There are decreased number of collisions from a statistical standpoint, from a traffic safety. And the improved safety is both for children because instead of perhaps coming around to the back of the car to put a baby stroller in and things, and perhaps where the car is angled in and children can get out of the car and go to the back of the car because when you open the door, it's blocking you getting to the sidewalk, it's just the reverse in this case. For cyclists, instead of you trying to back out of angled parking into oncoming cyclists that are on the roadway that you can't see at all because of the adjacent car that's blocking your view, it's considered significantly safer for cyclists that are using the street. It's got improved loading and unloading. Again, and I'll show you a picture, if you're loading from the trunk, you're loading right from the sidewalk instead of having to travel out into the street and load the trunk from the street side. It allows for improved handicap parking. It's easier for them. The increased space is, I mentioned, is more parking, and it helps with traffic calming. So this picture shows you, and we took information from a study by Nelson Nygaard. You may know that Patrick Sigmund was down, and he has talked to the community and to the Planning Commission and to the City Council about parking management. They completed a study on reverse angle parking. And you can see here where the demonstration is that you are loading the trunk right from the sidewalk. So it's now getting increased use. It's a simple maneuver, guides people to the sidewalk instead of the street, and some reasons for change are safety. Now here you are from the bicyclist's perspective coming down, and it's a little hard to see, but right up here, there's a person that's pulling out, and they're looking because now it's just a left look as you're exiting the parking spot, and you can see those cyclists that are coming down the street. So we have transportation agency information here that verifies that this is actually a safer maneuver. Is this really safer than head-and-angle parking? Yes. Tucson, amongst many cities, has reported an average of three to four bike car crashes per month before back-end angled parking, and none in the four years following implementation. So would the transition be difficult for drivers? We don't believe so. It would be aided with signs, like the one you see here, to clarify the appropriate use of these parking spots. And it's suggested, let me start, and it's that you put a few cars in the, in the parking spaces so that people know, and it's, it's really quite simple. You see cars parked this way, and you park the same way. There are some reverse angle parking issues for consideration that we've taken a look at. This is a little bit hard to read, but there are some situations where reversed angle parking may not be appropriate. For example, if you're out on a high-speed, busy street, maybe that gets a little bit tough out there, and that's one of several of the things that are used when you're evaluating this. But in this instance, we're only asking that the reverse angle parking be on the relatively less-traveled, slower Amber Lantern and Violet Lantern, not out on, for example, Main Street on PCH. A sample of where reverse angle parking is used, many cities in California, all over the United States, big cities, small cities, places like San Francisco, Arlington, Seattle, Chico, Philadelphia, it's really becoming quite more commonplace, and I think you will see that as we move forward in the traffic business, you will no longer see head-and-angle parking with few exceptions because this is so much safer. That's my presentation to give you a little bit on reverse angle or back-end parking, and why we specified it for the developer to show on Amber Lantern and on Violet Lantern. And it increases the amount of parking spaces on those three streets by a total of 12 from what the parallel parking is today, and yet it's an easier maneuver to back in in two steps instead of the parallel park in three.
All right, thank you, Brad. Do the Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Denton?
Brad, one of the questions that has crossed my mind, if we have this and people continue to pull in forward, what kind of problems do you anticipate with some cars backed in, some cars doing it the traditional way? Is that going to cause us some problems?
You know, in talking with other locations, they haven't seen it as a significant issue. It's not to say that somebody might try that at some point, at some time, but you're on a slow side street at the time, and if somebody makes that mistake, they can be ticketed. But I think you'll find that after a very short period of time, it's, it's really quite easy to see the concept, and, and once you see all the cars parked one way, you know, when I was up in San Francisco, I didn't see any cars parked, you know, in the opposite direction. We did run this by, in addition to Patrick Boris Stramov, and he agrees that this is a proper use of reverse angle parking at this location.
Commissioner Whitaker?
If this were striped for the traditional angled head-in parking, would we have the same number of parking spaces?
Probably within one or two. I'd have to absolutely check on the handicap parking and whether that makes a change on one end or the other, but I think it would be essentially equal, yes.
Thank you. I have, I have some questions because I'm not, I'm still not convinced, convinced on reverse angle parking. What happens when you have a pickup truck that has a long overhang, and they're, you know, they go in backwards, now that, now all of a sudden, they're hanging over the sidewalk?
Probably the same thing if they have a long front end, if we put wheel stops in, if we have a problem. The good news is, is we have a, really quite a wide sidewalk along Amber Lantern and Violet Lantern, so if they overhang the sidewalk a little bit, that would be fine in that particular location. It's not like some places that we have where we've got a very narrow sidewalk.
Now, I, I understand it's, you know, there's greater visibility when you're pulling out, and, you know, that's a benefit to cyclists. But you still have the problem when somebody's backing in, that they're not going to see a cyclist or a pedestrian or something. And especially if there's a car behind them, visibility is going to be even more difficult. You, you have that problem, that lack of visibility one way or the other, so I don't see how this is a benefit.
Well, I think, I think the benefit is this. When you're backing in, in the first place, you can see in your rearview mirror, and it's no, it's not dissimilar to parallel parking, so you're not increasing the difficulty there, right? When you're trying to do a, a back-end parallel parking job, you have the same issue. But when you are pulling out, you have clear visibility then as soon as you maybe nudge out just a little bit, whereas when you're backing out, you've got that car right next to you, and, and you, you get that feeling, and you keep backing out and backing out and backing out, and then wondering if somebody's going to hit you or what you're going to hit because that car completely blocks your view to the right, and that's significantly different in this situation.
Now, in Laguna Beach, on some of the quieter streets, and if you, you know, and we've all tried to do that parallel parking, and you put your signal on, and then you're trying to back in, and somebody's just right on your tail, and you miss, you can't get the spot. The next person does. You know, I, I just, you know, don't see, rear angle parking is very convenient. In fact, I think it's more frustrating.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that it's, it's proven to be safer, and it's, it's not, if you're parallel parking, you still have people that are going to come in and try and take that spot while you're stopping and signaling and waiting to back in.
And then my other question is, is this, is this part of the project, or this is just a separate, this is a city making this, this thing? So when we're looking at, you know, approving a project or not, this is or is not part of it?
It's really not a part of the developer's project, per se. It's really what we're asking them to do within the public right-of-way as part of our efforts to increase the amount of parking on the street there.
Okay.
So you could, if you're, this is not on private property, so it's not part of the private development.
All right. Any questions? We're done? All right. There are no more questions for Brad. Is the applicant going to come up and do their presentation, or what, what's on the schedule next?
Yes, the applicant will be presenting their project to you to receive your comments, questions, and if you have any questions for staff also during or after the applicant's presentation, we are here to respond to any questions you have for staff as well. Thank you.
Okay. Then come on up to the podium and state your name, and, and you've got the floor.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Tabus. I'm with Majestic Housing and Development, and I reside in Newport Beach, California. I want to thank everybody, the Commission, staff, and community for giving us an opportunity tonight to show you what we've been working on since our July 14th Commission hearing and the workshop that took place last Monday. I think what we're showing you tonight, and I want to be very clear about that, is, is a work in progress. You know, we have not had enough time to deliver a finished package of what we've done, but we are sharing with you the work that we've done so far and the changes that we've made in response to the comments that we heard on those prior evenings. And I also want to be, be clear that we, we heard you. I mean, we, we are not so arrogant that we are pushing a project that, where there are so many, so many outstanding concerns. We want something that is a win-win for the community. It's a win for, for, for the Commission, for the city, and it's a win for Majestic. So to that end, we have spent some considerable time, and, and what we're showing you is we focused in on, as you can see from what we're showing, a phase one and phase two, where we think we could make the most dramatic changes, and, and so, and that's where we got to so far. So with that, I'm going to start. So tonight, I want to, I want to do a few things. I want to, one, I want to recap our plans that were presented on the 14th. I want to then recap the August 4th community workshop, some of the, some of the highlights and, and discussion items of that evening. And then I want to present to you our new plan and features, and then sum it all up and show you some of the highlights. Okay? So if you recall, we submitted a, we, we presented on the 14th a proposal for 111 units, over, over 30,000 square feet of retail space, and two levels of subterranean parking. 30,000 square feet of retail space and two levels of subterranean parking in three phases, three development phases. We received comments from the community that they were, and from the commission, no height variances. There were significant objections that evening, I think we could count them, there were many. Too much off-site parking. At that evening, we were proposing that we would have as many as 63 in-lu parking spaces, that we would pay $15,000 per space, but we did not have them available on-site. Number three, we've heard in-lu parking fees may not work. Where will these in-lu parking spaces be? What will we do with the money? Will it be enough? Others said our architecture looked more like Irvine than Dana Point. I think one comment weren't wowed by it. I think there were comments, too many blank walls, too many elevations of ours where maybe it wasn't four-sided, and by four-sided, maybe the attention was on Del Prado, PCH, but maybe not as much on the western or eastern exposures where there were significantly blank walls. In fact, someone made the comment, it looked too dormitory-like. And then, of course, there was, there were a few comments, too much density. I think that pretty much covered the bulk of the comments, at least as we noted them. And, you know, I think to the community and to the commission's point, you know, there were some of our elevations, the west elevation in particular, we show some blank walls. So, you know, a little monotony in the elevation, you know, agreed. It doesn't have the kind of liveliness that you see on Del Prado or Amber, and it certainly needed some attention. We understood your comment that this may not look like Dana Point. It may, it could look, this could be built anywhere. Trying to do two things at once. And again, I think this slide, you know, again, showing some of our elevations, yes, we heard what you had to say. Some of our elevations needed work. And this is phase three, more of the same, I don't want to belabor the point. Although we show courtyards in our first scheme, and the images, you know, appear are just sample images, I didn't hear anybody get excited about those courtyards primarily because they were private. They looked a little bit like, you know, okay, but we'll never see them, and again, looks a little bit like Irvine. We then went to the workshop on August 4th, and I think Boris and Kyle's presentation that evening was very good in that they kind of reminded everybody what the goals and objectives of the Town Center Community Subcommittee was all about, and the Town Center specific plan. I heard Boris say specifically, goals and objectives, the committee sat down and decided, yes, mixed use. They wanted residential in the downtown area, they wanted that to be a part of the downtown community, and there was a reason for it, that housing would bring a certain vibrancy where retail alone wouldn't. They wanted the downtown to be pedestrian-friendly, and, you know, as we can see now, the downtown is rather pedestrian-unfriendly. They were looking for social gathering spaces, and, you know, whether they be on the streets or in niches or in, you know, lanes or whatever, those special places where communities tend, people from the community tend to just informally gather. They talked about shared parking and parking management, and I think, you know, Boris went off on a tangent on the shared parking and parking management issue, when he showed there are many different ways to handle the car in the downtown area. For example, right now, we have retail with parking lots, and that has a certain, you know, visually, that's a certain look to it. It's not only not very pleasing visually, it's also very difficult to create the kind of pedestrian spaces that I think the Town Center Subcommittee was looking for. The parallel parking is certainly okay, it's not the most efficient in terms of street parking, and I think Brad just shared that program. There are a few other alternatives. If we're going to have mixed use and we're going to have more retail and more commercial use downtown, how are we going to handle the car? And there were a couple of options. You could have parking garages above grade, or you could have parking, subterranean parking below grade, a very elegant way of handling your cars. Nobody sees them, they're tucked under, and that leaves a lot more land available for commercial use, residential use, and public space use. Other issues that Boris mentioned that night were creating interesting open spaces, not just open spaces. Lush landscaping, I took that note down. He was looking for those spaces to, you know, where it was really, just not a tree, but something that was really, really spoke to the beach community. And then, of course, he used a term that I think at least one person in the crowd questioned, and that was critical mass. And he used that very specifically, because in order for this downtown to have the kind of life and vitality that I think we're all looking for, we need a certain amount of mass, which means a certain amount of commercial development, a certain amount of residential development, a certain amount of activity, people on the street, you know, shoppers, eaters, sitters, all of that. These photos that we see throughout the Town Center and any specific plan and any of these other exhibits that we're showing, come to life with people. And what takes, you know, what gets people downtown is that critical mass. So, again, my architect and I, we were here, and we heard all of that, and we tried to incorporate, one, the comments and the criticisms that we received on the 14th, and mesh the comments that were made last Monday at the workshop, and come up with something that was new and better. So, first off, I just want, I'm going to highlight some of the changes, and then I'm going to show you. First, we eliminated the height variance. We went back to the drawing board and figured out on phase two where we had the height variance, how that we could lower the alley. We were putting in so many different improvements and repaving, and anyway, why not lower the utilities, lower the street, and fit everything in? So, we've been able to accomplish that. We have been able to add 37 more onsite parking stalls, and we are, those parking stalls are added in phase one and two primarily. That reduced our in-lu parking spaces requirement to, down to 26 from 63. And I think that we, you know, we internally agreed and in conversation with staff, agreed that those in-lu spaces should be identified prior to issuance of building permits. As we'll see as we walk you through the schematics, the phase one and two is almost entirely parked. First of all, whether it was July 14th or tonight, or will be next month, all our residential parking has always been onsite. It was never, that's never been an issue. We want to make sure that each one of our condominium units had adequate parking. It's a marketing decision as much as it is a city requirement. Secondly, we have been able to now, on phase one and two, get almost all, if not all, our commercial, our retail parking underneath as well. And that means that really the in-lu parking spaces, in-lu fees really are coming about in phase three, which is, will be a later phase. Nevertheless, we agree that, you know, really, you shouldn't be issuing us building permits until we can say, okay, here those spaces are identified, and we can acknowledge that they actually exist before we build. Another big change, our private courtyards are now public. What we're doing is, we have broken apart the buildings to allow connectivity and creating paseo access into our courtyards. Now, they'll be open until evening, at which point gates will come down at a certain point in time. Restaurants are closed, shops are closed, and the residents of these particular units will then have some privacy. We've, like I said, we created some paseos as links between the community and the project. We've gone through and softened the architecture, made it more beach-like, more Dana Point-like. We've eliminated blank walls. I personally have looked at a lot of the walls and want to see landscaping on somewhere we can, and other treatments that will add a lot more street interest. So, with that, I'll move on to the plan, which I have some enlargements, but I'm going to speak to the overall right now. As you can see, from the first plan to the, our original plan to this version, we've broken the buildings at the ground level, here and here and here, and in phase two as well. And I think that's going to make a very big difference to the community. What we've done is, we've actually angled back, if you saw close up, we've actually angled back this retail space and creating a paseo that kind of widens as you move through it. There'll be glass along each side. We expect this corner to be probably a restaurant, I can't guarantee it, but that's what we're planning on right now. And this being retail, we can have glass shop, you know, so that people, as they're walking in, will be able to do a little window shopping as they move into the courtyard. We've created a multitude of features in here. As one of the most, more important items is we have some, not only opportunities now for street eating, which I'm showing here and here, and to name a few, but we're also showing opportunities to have courtyard dining. Now, of course, the exact configuration of these outdoor eating areas will be shaped by the tenant further down the line, but conceptually, I think we have an opportunity to have not just street eating, but some more intimate courtyard eating. We've created some, a water feature, an area for public art, plenty of areas for seating, benches, lush landscaping along this wall. These bands that you see cutting through are just enhanced paving, kind of suggesting connectivity and traffic pattern. We think that we have brought a lot of life into this space that where, as before, that was just a closed-off courtyard for the benefit of the residents of this community. It's now been opened up, and, you know, I think it could be one of those kind of places where people from the neighborhood just drift down, get their coffee, and hang out, just like they're hanging out now at the harbor. But this is much closer to home. We've done the same in phase two. We took out a unit, so instead of the 111, it's now 110. And we took out one of the units to expand the courtyard. We've also thought that, to make this even better, is we would agree to enhance the paving in the alley to kind of match the courtyard paving, so that it looked bigger. We hope that this would be the start of something great that would happen to the east, and that the next developer and so forth would pick that up and do something clever as well to match. We've added, this was a utility easement, we've added another link right next door, this is where the Genkai and then the UPS store is. Between the Genkai and phase two, we've added another pedestrian link. We have looked at outdoor seating on Del Prado here, outdoor seating for another restaurant, a potential restaurant in this particular corner as well, water feature. We've tried to make these paseos not just corridors and token, hey, here's our connective, here's our link, but we've tried to show, angle them out and widen them so that they become really useful and enjoyable places to spend some time. I also want to talk a little bit about Amber Lantern. You know, we are trying to create a community, what we'll call a little mini Del Prado mixed community, within the greater community of Dana Point and the greater community of Town Center. And we had a unique opportunity here, because we own property on both sides of Amber Lantern, to try to create something different than just parallel parking with a couple of token trees and whatever paving that the city staff asked us to put in, and do something special, first of all, to link our projects together, because they are linked, and second, to stand out as something different. Ah, what's going on down there on Amber Lantern? We also, and I have to disagree with Brad, we also wanted to find a more efficient way of parking, because we knew we could add, we could get more spaces in angled parking, reverse or otherwise, than we could with parallel. And we've added nine more spaces on Amber, and since we only, as we get down to Violet, which is only half the, we only control half the street, there'll be another three. We acquired, we were able to get 12 more spaces. That's more than what's already there now. So we're not, when we were counting our parking spaces, I think some people were confused. We're not taking credit for a parking that's already there, we're only asking for credit for the new parking that would be added with this angled configuration. But I think the angled will actually set this part of Town Center apart, and be very unique, be very charming. So we were very excited about it, and we were very excited that staff was supportive of it, and then, you know, as we learned later, they were asking us to try something new with the reverse angled parking. So, I just wanted to explain that a little bit. Let me see. So, I just wanted to emphasize again, the difference between July 14th proposal and tonight's proposal, the shaded area represents public open space, at least during most of the day, to the extent that phase one now, 23% of the land area is now available for public use. To me, that's a big change, and I think, I hope you all see that as well. And on phase two, 14% of the land area, that doesn't include the alley, is now allocated for public use. Big difference, I think. And now, we've taken some, you know, some close-up views, so you can see a little bit of some highlight. There's now, I think, a stronger relationship between, you know, the retail and the private and the open space. I think it'll be a much stronger retail tenant and a much more vibrant retail space with the courtyard than with just street use. The outdoor lounge areas, I think, are going to add quite a bit. There's an awful lot going on, I don't want to, I think, you know, for those of you who've walked up to the easels, I think you can see that there's quite a lot that we're proposing to take place in there that I think will be exciting. Seating, lounging, art, you know, there's a public art requirement, but I think we could, you know, do something pretty special in there. Even opportunities for an outdoor fireplace, for winter outdoor dining. Next. I think this is, we're now focusing on phase two and showing you that there's still plenty of opportunity in phase two now for outdoor seating and dining and hanging out. Now, I threw this slide in because I just wanted to kind of depart a little bit, and again, harp on this parking management thing. You know, when we first, before we submitted anything to the city, or maybe we had submitted something to the city, but very early on, we looked at a scenario in which we would build a parking garage above grade and put all the units around, and the retail, and not go underground with our parking. Far less expensive, far less expensive. I mean, I think everybody knows, or if not they should know, that subterranean parking is a very expensive way. is a very expensive way to handle the car. It's the most elegant way because it's out of the way and you don't see car, you don't see all this parking lot. Everybody likes that, but it's a very expensive way nevertheless. That was our first pass, and it's a path, a solution that, you know, doesn't give anything to the community or to the residents. It's, it's, you got a ring of, of shops and homes above and blah, nothing. You know, look what we can do. We're going underground, we're opening up the, the courtyards to public use. And of course, we need, I guess this is my point, we need the critical mass to make all of that work. And that's the, the, while some said there's too much density, we need the critical mass to create the kind of vibrancy and to create the kind of solution that I think is best, that, that works better for the, for the town. You know, this is the benefit of putting parking underground. You know, you have more open spaces like this and more, more activities and more, more social, you know, more, more social life. So that, that's kind of on that. The next thing I wanted to talk about, and I think highlighted in our, our list of changes we made, were related to the actual architecture. Previous scheme, this is one of our elevations on Site One. We've, we've spent a lot of time talking about really what is, you know, what works for Dana Point and really what, what kind of styles and how to soften our, our elevations for more street interest and more, more local architecture, if I might use that expression. And so we've, we've added, you know, window treatments and we've broken up massing, I think, to a great degree, and we've, we're adding more stone and native materials and to create a lot more street interest than we had before. So I'll go back, right? And then this is the new and improved. This was another one of, of our previous schemes, Site Two. We've gone back and added a lot more life to it, just worked on the, the, the glass and the windows and the treatment around those windows and really tried to lighten it up and make it more Dana Point-like. Again, previous schemes, blank walls, yeah, nobody liked it, dormitory-like. We got rid of that. This is the, the new and improved. That was the old, this is the new. We've got rid of the palm trees too, because I think everybody had, so. I think, I think you can see that, you know, the enhanced treatment around the, the alley bridge, the, the way we've, I'll, I'll go back and forth. I mean, I think the way we've handled, not only colors, changed colors, softened the colors, made it more beach, Dana Point-like, but I think that we've, we've gone a long way. This is another, this is a more close-up view. We haven't finished, these are sample elevations, we're not finished. We're, we're not finished because we, we could only look at a few and, and start developing a new vernacular, if you will, and, and wanted to come to this workshop and kind of present, here we are right now. But, and then we did a rendering. This, this rendering is taken, takes place from, is taken from Amber Lantern. You can see to the right is Berger Schwach, right there. This, this building, this is our Phase Two, and that's where Ty This is right now. And this is Phase One, OC Beads is on the corner now. And, and we wanted to show how our project kind of fit in, you know? We, we think it fits in. I mean, it may be, you know, a, a big change for everyone, but it fits in, we think, with kind of the context, at least, and you can see in the background, the angled parking. Again, we, we, this is a progress rendering. We haven't even gotten in all the, the street eating and all the other elements that we would like to, but we wanted to give you guys, everyone a chance to kind of see what this looks like in 3D. So, to recap, we sat down and we were thinking, okay, how do we create fun and interesting public spaces, public spaces? How do we bring public art and lush landscaping and incorporate them into, into our project? We wanted to provide places to lounge and walk. We wanted to make sure we, we identified outside dining on the street and in the courtyards. We wanted to present an improved shopping experience, because I think a lot of this is not just about the residential, it's also about the shopping experience. Social gathering, good parking management, I think we talked through that, and enhanced architecture and streetscape. We think the Amber Lantern streetscape is, and changed parking is a considerable upgrade. The alley, street paving enhancements. And then, of course, as I mentioned last month, you know, this project is still contributing, would contribute a significant amount of funds to benefit the community. So, the one other, one other thing I wanted, another point I wanted to make tonight, before I throw it out there for comments and questions, was on the comment that was made last month about fear of density and densification, as though this majestic project could be repeated throughout the Town Center specific plan area. And, and with a little bit of math, I think somebody said, there could be 2,000 units developed in the Town Center specific plan. Well, I think if you, if you look and maybe over the next month, before we come back to the public hearing, most of the ownership in, in Town Center specific plan area, which is that kind of that yellow area, is in very small fractured ownership. It is very unusual that Majestic has 2.2 acres under single ownership. It's just, I don't think there's a possibility, and I talked with staff earlier today, of even one more Majestic in this specific plan area, let alone more than one. I think that there, the ownership parcels, first of all, are limited to have, you know, smallest 5,000 square feet up to maybe a half an acre, completely different. I think there are very few projects like, properties like ours where one owner owns from Del Prado to PCH. I think that there are a number of owners, and I've talked with many of them, who plan to keep their projects, their properties exactly the way they are, at least for some time to come. Their commercial properties have just been remodeled, they're happy with it the way they are, they are not interested in mixed use. I think that the transition to, from what is there now to mixed use is going to happen over a very long period of time. But we see the, the opportunity to get a project of this size going to sort of set the tone and to, to bring the vitality to the downtown sooner rather than later as an advantage and not a negative, not a disadvantage. So I wanted to leave with that thought, kind of put it all into perspective. Of course, you know, we're, we're here because we wanted more feedback and we wanted to see if there were some things that, you know, we may have missed and that we, that could be covered better. So we appreciate the, the time and your comments. And for that, I will sit down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peggy. I think the commissioners might have some questions for you, so you can get back on the podium there. And Commissioner Denton, you want to start out?
Thank you very much for your presentation. One of the comments I think we heard last time in July was about the rooftop patios, and I didn't see anything in tonight's presentation, plus or minus, about the rooftop, sun umbrellas. There was a lot of concern about the added height on top of the buildings. What's your thoughts going forward on that?
Well, we think the roof decks are an amazing asset. I mean, the, the views from up there will be outstanding, and it seemed to be a shame to not allow those who are, are owners of these condos to be able to take advantage of that. I understand the concern of random umbrellas, and, and I think that maybe there's some way that we can condition what happens up there and limit what happens in terms of furniture. I'll say that. We're, we're open to thinking through that more carefully. We do want to keep the roof decks. We have pushed them back as we were required, but we can explore that in terms of the, the actual furniture part.
The other question I, I think we heard was on Del Prado, especially the corner that this last picture showed here. It, it does not kind of reflect this, whoops, excuse me, this setback that we were hoping to see that would allow more room for restaurant or outdoor seating. This picture here still has, you know, a massive beam in that corner. Didn't know if you'd, I like what you've done on the inside there with the added restaurant, but I don't see that. Maybe it's, maybe it's in that drawing and I didn't see it in the picture over here, you know, where the, originally, I think there was some discussion about glass that could slide away.
Right.
And that restaurants could allow you to walk in.
I think that what you're looking at, if you're looking at the rendering, and Mike knows, it's, it's a work in progress.
Yeah, I understand.
Our intention, I think, as you can see, is, is for that, exactly that to happen on those corners.
Right.
In particular, you know, if you notice there's bulb out, there's kind of pop outs in the way the paving is, and we really want to see that little pop out there. Yet we want to really be able to maximize that opportunity. It's not reflected in this, in, right now, because like I said, that rendering is, like a lot of what we're presenting tonight is not 100% complete, but that is our intention.
And one other last comment on the new elevations, where you're talking about the blank walls, and is there more articulation to the up and down, like bay windows or setbacks or patios or, or little treatments where people can come out of those windows and maybe?
Little balconies?
I'm not sure if I see little balconies there, is that a bay window?
Uh, let me, whoops, wrong button. I've got too many devices here to play with.
Looks like a, looks like a balcony, right next to your red dot there? Yeah, right there?
That's a balcony.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We, in fact, I think on the courtyard side, as well as on the street side, there's going to be a lot of that, a lot of in and out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question I do have is, you mentioned that you're not going to be asking for a height variance. Are you going to continue with a variance for four stories of residential?
Yes. But within the height, 40 feet.
And then, on the same question about the treatment of the blank façades, could you turn it to the west elevation? I think Phase One, west elevation?
Site One.
I think we just went past it again.
That's, that's Site Three.
Okay. So what, on that blue building on the lower elevation next to the palm tree, what, what are those long thing up above? There.
Window treatments? They're trellises.
So there'll be openings there?
I wish I could zoom in, but I can't.
Yeah. So is that going to be an opening where before it had been just?
Blank wall? Yes. What we're trying to do, I mean, on some of these, we're trying to figure out ways, develop ways to get landscaping, to kind of green some of these walls.
Mm-hmm. So those, those, so just to clarify, those are actually window openings, not just green on the wall?
Mike knows.
Yeah.
They're trellises.
Oh, okay. Those are trellises. Okay. I see that. I think that's all of my questions for right now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Newkirk?
Excuse me. I don't have any specific question. I think, you know, that the Town Center plan is really two components, design guidelines and development standards. And I think the efforts that you've shown are, are big strides toward design guidelines, which are collaborative, suggested, working with the city. You know, the, the development standards, I, I still see that as, as an issue. And, you know, critical mass, I, I understand the concept well. I think in the true build-out of this, critical mass is a vibrant community that's enjoyed by all the residents, not just the, the number of condos that are there that are creating traffic. It's creating an environment where all the residents of Dana Point and all the Shining communities come to. And it is needed, but, you know, one of my big concerns still tips back to the development standards.
I don't really have any questions either. I just, I did want to say that I appreciate that, the fact that you took a lot of the comments from both meetings that we've had and incorporated some of that into, into your revised plan. And, you know, I think the paseos are really nice, you know, opening up certain areas for the public to, to walk down. It's similar to, you know, things we've seen in Europe, and it's just, it, it, it would be nice to, you know, have that in our town. And of course, we're always interested in additional parking. And I, I think that the architectural features that you've done is a great improvement too. But I don't actually have any specific questions, so, other than that, I, I think what we're going to do now, we're going to take a break around 8:00, and, but we're going to do the, we have public hearing, which we are continuing from our last meeting. And so everything you said at the last meeting still carries over. All the letters we've received, that carries over too. So what, when I call you up, hopefully it'll be new information. You can, you know, try to limit your comments to new information rather than repeating the same stuff that you've said, you know, at the other meeting. But we do have quite a bit of speakers. Do I have all the speaker forms? Do we have any late people that want to rush under the wire here and turn in more? Okay. Well, with that, thank you, Peggy.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And we'll, we'll begin with Buck Hill, followed by Bill McCormick.
Excuse me, if I may mention that I'm going to ring the bell when you have 30 seconds left. That one. And you'll have 30 more seconds to conclude. Thank you.
Okay, there are three things I want to talk about, density, parking, and loading space. And let me start with the loading space. According to the old drawings, there's a spot right there, a boat, the entryway to the garage.
I'm going to need you to use the, the microphone. Well, we're audio recorded, so we have to have the microphone.
Oh, thank you. So the, the problem is, where would these merchants on each major street receive their deliveries? I can't find any loading spaces. They're designated on the entryways to the various parking garages, and there's no extra width there, so that when somebody is, is parking their delivery truck, taking beverages to a restaurant, or food, or just normal deliveries to the residents of these places, such as FedEx trucks and UPS. On, on each of these sites, there's an unduly long distance. If you imagine that alley on Site Two, which runs over to Site Three, that there's a little wide spot there where all the trucks are supposed to stop, and you'd have to truck all the deliveries around to either way down Pacific Coast Highway. all the deliveries around to either way down Pacific Coast Highway, one way or the other. So I think what we're going to end up with is double parked cars all over the place, in Amber Lantern, as it was described last time, for the garbage trucks, and likewise in, in both PCH and Del Prado, for all the other delivery trucks, whether we want it or not. And there are no marked spaces and no allowances in the thing. I, I cite in the letter we sent you the specific code element, nine point something, 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 but it requires for buildings of these sizes to have these kinds of loading areas. Now, I, I want to complain about density in that this is not the, the type of structure described in the Town Center Plan. We're thinking about retail and merchants and restaurants and all this appealing stuff for the residents, and then shared with some living spaces. But, but this is greatly unbalanced. The total square footage of these buildings is 243,000 square feet, and the total retail space before these open areas, which is a great idea, I wouldn't go against it, but with the old drawings, the total retail space was 26,000 square feet. It's only 11% of the total building area of all of these structures. So what we expected was one-third retail, one-third perhaps office or residence, and one-third residency. This is way balanced, it's a condo project with a few retail spots stuck on the edge. Secondly, there's some zoning questions that weren't raised by the staff. For example, there's a floor area ratio requirement not greater than 2.5. Phase Two and Phase Three both violate that in the old structure, and I think will be even worse now. The other points are these towers. You'll hear more about height from other people, but I, I gave you a sheet, which I hope has been passed around. Those are the high points from the ground to these towers. It's huge, 56 feet to several of them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bill McCormick, followed by Betty Hill.
My questions have been answered.
All right, thank you. That saves us some time. So then Betty Hill, and then Tom Fox.
Betty Hill from Capistrano Beach. Frankly, I'm disappointed. The fourth story variance is a critical issue, and there's no legal justification for that variance. But I want to say, most of us here tonight support the development of Town Center. We want to get it started in the right direction, which makes this situation ironic, because we're all, all we're asking is for the city to follow the requirements of the Town Center Plan. And this is a plan that the city has asked residents to pay $24 million for. Instead, you know, that sounds kind of simple, but what we ended up with was developers who were confused, residents who are worried, and a planning department that didn't seem to be aware of the, of the details of the plan. But we have a great opportunity to create a wonderful, vibrant, fantastic Town Center, one that residents and visitors can be proud of and enjoy, one that would be truly unique in all of Orange County. And we shouldn't let that go. We should keep, we should stay with that vision. And I think it's important, and the residents deserve, for a planning commission, a planning department staff, and a city council to support that, that vision and make it happen for us. And I think we deserve that, and I think we can do it if we just stick with the plan that we have in place, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Fox, followed by Jack Lanyard. Please state your name and city of residence.
My name is Tom Fox. I live in Dana Point. My main concern has been the on-street parking problem. It's going to exist when this project is completed. We understand that they've reduced the number of what, in, in lieu spaces, down to 26, but still, those have to come from someplace. And I live on Santa Clara Avenue, and I'm really concerned that we're going to, all the parking will be backed up on these residential streets, and it's going to cause a problem for everybody in that area. So that's my main concern right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Jack Lanyard, followed by Carl Iverson.
Hi, members of the Commission, Jack Lanyard, Dana Point. I, I came here tonight with a lot of negative comments. I think Peggy addressed quite a few of them, but not all of them. You know, my main concern is the four stories. You know, in this, I first saw the plan, and the one that was at the city until today, it didn't have the changes. I was looking for something positive, there wasn't much, but this is a much better plan. So I, I want to thank you for that. My main concern is the massing four stories with very little setback. As I've traveled around the country, I've kind of looked at buildings of that size, and if you ride up next to them, it's huge. If you set them back 20 feet, like Back Bay in Boston, it's not that bad. I think we need more setback and more public space. That would be my primary comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanyard. Carl Iverson, followed by, I think it's Dana Yager.
Good evening, Carl Iverson, Capistrano Beach. Well, to be honest, I came here tonight to do battle with the resubmission of what we'd already seen. I would like to compliment Majestic on the effort they have put forth, because I think they have made progress. They actually listened to our comments of the last meeting. I still have a problem with the parking, particularly the in-lu parking situation. At the workshop we had with Boris last week, the city manager pointed out clearly, there was nothing in place to even provide this yet. So this is a situation that is kind of vague. We need to really resolve the in-lu parking before they get granted the right to have this. That's one issue. I would like, this is the first time I have seen this. I have reviewed the other submission in detail. I would like to ask staff to put this online as soon as possible, so that the community has a, a little bit of time to digest what's been presented here tonight. Like I say, I think they're going in the right direction, but there's still going to be some issues that need further discussion. There were some conflicting comments tonight about variances. The initial comment was, we're not asking for any variances, but yet, when Ms. Whitaker asked the question, there were variances that are being requested. I would like that clearly defined. Are there variances that are being requested? Yes or no? I am against any variance whatsoever. That's pretty much it. Give us a little bit of time to digest this. I think we're on the right path here. We want to see development, but, but like Boris said, it's the quality that we're after. So let's pursue that, okay? And hopefully, when we come back next time, we can have something that we can all kind of agree to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iverson. We have Dana Yager, followed by Trent Hoffer-Bur.
Good evening, everyone, and I want to add a comment coming from a position, I'm, sorry, Dana Yager. I live on Del Prado, does this thing work, about, right in the middle of, in between the two Christmas tree lots. And with a partner, we remodeled that building, and it's a mixed-use building, and kind of a, maybe in a small way, a model of what we're trying to get to. So I'm very interested in how this develops. We live there, we have two businesses there, so I'm looking forward to this. I actually, I compliment you on the concept you put together on, is that Amber? Between Site One and Site Two? That is kind of a cool, cool concept, and the open courtyards. I also want to thank that person who took the time to drive a whole hour back home, that they have such an interest to come to Dana Point and offer their, their opinions. But I, I commend you on the progress. I know everybody's going to say it's not there yet, and I'd like you to see that you consider Site Three being a totally different architectural concept, in my opinion, because I think you're, what you might be creating in Site One and Site Two is really a destination. It seems like a cool concept, right there, that whole package, but why continue that theme in a cookie cutter kind of sense into Site Three? That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Trent Hoffer-Bur, if I, I'm sorry if I mispronounced it, followed by Terry Walsh.
My question's been answered.
All right, great. Terry Walsh, followed by Sandy Iverson.
Good evening. I, I think it's interesting to talk to the wall and to the corner here, but, again, I'd like to offer my compliments, I guess, to the wall, that the developer has come back with some changes and, and claims to have listened, but kind of missed my number one issue, which was the four stories. And for those that really listened to everything that Boris had to say, he wanted a higher quality downtown, we all wanted that, we all embraced that, we all want development downtown. And to get that, we wanted to go from 35 feet to 40 feet, and the only reason was, was to get a higher quality first floor for retail. It wasn't so that we could squeeze more living units in to some side street called the Lantern Streets. And I'm very, very concerned about that. Another question I would have, and I haven't had a chance to look at these plans in detail, I went to City Hall and they were unavailable. Are all of these setbacks and step backs embedded in this plan? And I think that that could be a very simple yes or no type answer. As far as the parking, that I'll leave that to other people to, to talk about, but I really don't want to spend much more time talking about whether I should back into my parking space or go straight in. The purpose of tonight is to talk about the building that Majestic wants to build, and like that. I'd like to close, and without, for the sake of not being arrogant, and arrogant, my wife tells me that's very difficult. I'd like to, to share a comment that was made by Gary Newkirk at the last meeting, and ask the developer to go for it. I think Gary hit it right on the head when we were talking about a development on Blue Lantern, and that preceded the Majestic presentation. And Gary said, and I can't quote it, but it's when something like, "Follow the plans, follow the ordinances, work with the community, and your project flies right through." I'd like to ask the developer to begin today to work with the community. I haven't seen it, to be critical. The story polls went up and down like that internet commercial on television where they, it pops up and then, you know, goes right back down. I didn't see them, and I live here. And I'd be very interested in looking at these things, if they would stay up for, for more than 24 hours. To put them up over for the July weekend and take them down within 24 hours.
No clapping.
To me, is like a stick in your thumb in my eye. That's not working with the community. We have all kinds of ways that you can reach out to the community. How about some models? How about some community outreach programs? It isn't up to the city to do this for you. I know you're going to give the city all this money, and they're all excited about that, but I'm not. I want to end up with a very good development when we get all done. And I spent 36 meetings listening to Boris, and I think he makes a lot of sense. And if you listen to everything Boris had to say last week, and follow Gary, follow the plan, work with the community, and your project will sail right through. Thank you.
Thank you. Order. No clapping. It takes away extra time. Sandy Iverson, followed by Deborah Lewis.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sandy Iverson, Capistrano Beach. In listening to the Amber Lantern parking, you know Brad, I love you, but think about Del Mar Avenue in San Clemente. It is front-loaded, you know, front-end parking, back-out, single lane, and it's a lot busier than what we have now. I'm not against the back-end parking, but what's to stop somebody who, instead of backing in on the right side, sees the one on the other side and goes, whoosh, and then he's suddenly front-end? So unless you have some barriers in the street, which you know are just, they're just going to roll over them. So that was my only comment, that, because I go to Del Mar Avenue on a regular basis, and it seems to work. And it is, you know, definitely a shopping and pedestrian-friendly area. And he mentioned also that these are slow streets. These, Amber Lantern particularly is not going to be a slow street. You get those many people coming in and out of those garages, day in and day out, and delivery trucks stopped, where are the moving vans going to be to move these people in? Or if somebody orders furniture and that's delivered, where are they going to stop and park? Moving vans often take an entire day to unload. So I don't see any of this type of traffic address, and then it'll back everything up on, to PCH and Del Prado, waiting for these trucks to unload. So just a couple of thoughts on that. I do want to compliment Majestic for coming back with definitely a nicer-looking project, and something that I can see they've been listening, and that I appreciate that you came to this Town Center meeting last week. That was great. And so we appreciate that. We're, we're going to get there. Thank you.
Deborah Lewis, followed by Donna Berger.
No, it was the one that was sitting up there as we all came in. Yeah, that one. Okay. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Deborah Lewis. I live in Dana Point, and I think, thank you, we're moving in the right direction, but I still have some of the same concerns that I've had all along. And I noticed that the screen gives us three stories, and I'm not sure if I'm seeing any rooftop decks. And if the whole project looked like that, I'd be a lot happier. We have this Town Center Plan, as everyone has said, it has three stories, 40 feet, it's very specific, and it just seems like it's way too early in this process to just toss this out and say, okay, let's grant some variances. And specifically, my concerns, I haven't really had much of a chance to look at this, but specifically, I'm concerned about the rooftop decks and these elevator shafts. When we start talking about the elevator shafts that were on the plan before, the west side of Amber Lantern, now we're 54 feet above grade. Amber Lantern east side was 55 feet above grade, and Violet Lantern west side was 56 and a half feet. I mean, we're almost talking six-story buildings there. And I think that granting those variances and CUPs would set a precedent, it would give a preference, and now we're going to have other people coming in and saying, well, I need a variance to look over those buildings. I don't see it as a regulatory taking. There's still going to be use for this, this property, so I don't see that as an issue. Also, with respect to the rooftop decks, the Town Center Plan was very specific, page 32 states, and I'm quoting, "Any CUP for a rooftop deck in Town Center requires findings for two of the following parameters. One, approval will not result in undue impact on the quiet use, enjoyment, or privacy of surrounding properties. And two, approval will not result in undue adverse impacts on ocean views from surrounding properties." Now, I understand the rooftop decks will give ocean views to those condo owners, but at the expense of the surrounding properties violates the Town Center's specific parameters. And so I would ask that the rooftop decks be looked at, because I don't see that granting that CUP would be in keeping with Town Center Plan. And I'd also echo the story polls. I didn't really get to see them, and I think we deserve the right to see what this, what these buildings will look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Berger, followed by Jay Harford.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Donna Berger. I'm a 31-year resident of Dana Point. I am going to echo a little bit of what the previous speaker just said, but I'm going to start out by saying, despite the fabulous job you have done in getting public comment and input, there's a reality involved with that, and that is, usually, opportunities to provide public input, you see the stakeholders, people who have a specific interest in what's going to happen with their property, whether it's resident or business. But there are thousands and thousands and thousands of people who are coming home tonight, going to soccer practices and making dinner, who are not here. The buzz around this city is the concern about the 40 feet, nobody wants 40 feet. In our plan, we're talking about a desired scale and character of the area, a small-town village atmosphere. People don't want to see anything tall as part of this plan. Also, people are concerned about views, and what the previous speaker mentioned was, yeah, it's not cool to have condos with umbra- yeah, it's not cool to have condos with umbrellas and things that are going to block the views of people who've been here for 40 years and have homes. So those are the two big concerns. The other thing is the architectural style. I'm really happy to see the responsiveness of Monarch and the improvements. However, when you look at those, do you say, oh yeah, that's a beach town? And we talked about the history of Dana Point in our plan. We talked about Richard Henry Dana. And I'm not suggesting that we should have little pieces of wood with pelicans and paddles everywhere and oars. But there are lots of beach cities. What makes us different from Laguna Beach or San Diego or Huntington Beach? We don't want to look like that. So not only when you look at it, do you not necessarily go, oh yeah, that's beachy, but we don't want to just be beachy. We want to be Dana Point. And so I think we need to maybe continue on this good progress and do something that blends a little more with the nautical maritime boating kind of a theme and use of color and as well as the architecture. I know when the, when the plan was first written, we talked about that Dana Point had Spanish Revival, followed by something that looked New England Cape Cod. And now we're adding on something that's sort of like a California modern. So maybe we need to get a little bit away from the California modern and get a little, maybe a little more nautical as we soften out. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Harford followed by Lynn Muir. Is Jay Harford here? All right. Well, we don't have Jay Harford. So why don't we do Lynn Muir?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members. I was going to start off with a little bit of fun, a little bit of trivia before I get started. I'm Lynn Muir, resident of Dana Point since 1951. Owned property on the Town Center since 1978. And I opened my architectural office here in 1963. The Town Center Plan is excellent. My only concern about this development is the floor area ratio, the higher density of residential and residential in relation to the commercial. The height, I'm satisfied with. Roof decks, there's adequate information in the Town Center Plan to cover that. This project, I believe, is ready to be conceptually approved and let's move forward. The parking, if you look at Laguna Beach and they're on, in Lou parking, is the success of that community. And we need that here. So that, let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Hart followed by Anthony Kelly.
Hello. I was listening to comments. I'm the resident of Dana Point for 28 years. I was listening to the comments regarding Violet Lantern and Amber Lantern and it seemed to minimize.
I'm sorry, can you state your name?
My name is Debbie Hart.
Okay.
It seems to minimize the use of Amber Lantern and Violet Lantern to the locals. These are small streets, but they are used on a daily basis. I personally don't own a car, haven't had one in five years, but my family does and we are jockeying for position constantly. I brought photos of the parking over this past weekend and the weekend prior. If I can show them to you, I'd like you to see them. They're of Amber Lantern below Violet Coast Highway, El Encanto and Violet Lantern. Can I bring these to you? We are impacted greatly in those areas and that's where I live. You have to walk into the street to get around cars that are blocking the sidewalks because there's no parking on the street. I do believe this parking will go over into Santa Clara and those areas. Let me see. I do oppose the variances and pretty much things that I wanted to say were already said. I do want to mention the, the shared parking. We've talked about, that was talked about last Monday, that the city would, there would be shared parking for guests and private use. We don't know where that parking is. There's nothing slated that I've heard of within Dana Point to house a parking garage that you had mentioned. I'd like to know what, what the plan is on that. If the city planned to purchase property to build a parking garage, where's the parking going to be? But I'd like for you to look at those pictures and take into consideration that it's not, not very nice right there, walking down an Amber Lantern and Violet and El Encanto. Thank you.
Did you want them back? The photos? Anthony Kelly followed by Michael Frost.
The issues I had to point out were that.
Please state your name and city of residence.
My name's Anthony Kelly and I'm from Dana Point. I just wanted to point out that I don't think enough is being said about like setting up. It seems like there's a lot of negative externalities with these residences and I don't see how the developer is going to help offset those in the long term and then the residents will be stuck addressing those. And then two, it's, I mean, social security and the stock market, they're just, as far as retirement goes, they're not very reliable these days. And it seems like this would be a great opportunity to allow for more community investment rather than just letting the developer have this basically. And I mean, it just seems like the architecture isn't what it could be. And then, I mean, it seems like the only way these days to have, to build property here is to have those residents. And if we don't, for commercial properties that is, and it seems like that needs to be addressed too. I mean, we can't just, you know, keep building residences to have new construction in town. So, yeah, just, and also too, it seems like the, I'm glad we're being proactive with the parking spaces, but it doesn't seem like for the, for most of the fatal accidents in the area, that they have been caused by any parking issues, but rather issues with class-two bike lanes. So I hope that'll be looked at further.
Thank you. Michael Frost followed by our last speaker, Tom Gates.
Hi, Michael Frost. I live in the Lantern Village. Actually, for a couple of years, I was on the board of the Lantern Village, the residential area, all around actually this area. And as a matter of fact, I also live on Amber Lantern. So I'm familiar with, I think, Mrs. Hart and her issues with parking. Although I do believe those are more geared towards the fact that those particular owners have a heck of a lot of people living in their units. But I don't think you should be held accountable for that. Either way, I wanted to say I support the project, clean up the variances. People understand it's going to be an iterative process. I think you've got a, you've gained a lot of support today. I don't know if later this week, we'll have some letters fly out to the letter, to the Dana Point Times to the, that contradict that. But at least from what I can hear, you've done a great job. So keep going. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Gates. You're the last contender here.
My name is Tom Gates and I live in the Lantern District. I live on Santa Clara. Here's my message, and I, I think you've heard it a little bit tonight. And that is, we've got a Town Center Plan. Now is not the time to start granting variances. And now is the time to, for the first project should be a showcase project. Whether it has rooftop gardens and elevator shafts is not going to make, make it more acceptable, I guess, to those of us that live around there. We don't want people up on the top story blocking views and looking in yards and things like that. So my, my opinion is we follow the law. And the law is the Town Center Plan. That plan calls for 40 feet. That plan calls for special considerations in order to grant rooftop gardens and the like. So here we are. We live in a republic. And this is my message at the end. We live in a republic. We elect our elected officials. In this case, we elect a city council. They end up appointing planning commission people. What we want in a republic is that our elected officials and appointed officials follow what dictates and the wants are of the residents and the voters in this town. So I challenge you to follow what the people want and not necessarily what a couple of developers want with a project. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold the applause. We are going to, can you keep open the public hearing and continue? So all your comments are going to carry over to the next meeting. So do we need a motion to continue the project or?
Yes, we'll need a motion.
All right. So. You want to make some comments? Okay, sure, yeah. All right. We, you want to start, since I started at that end before? Commissioner Newkirk, you'd like to make comments then?
You know, I think tonight, the entire process has made progress. It's great. We've got as much engagement from the community. Because at the end of the day, this is our town. Everybody that's lived here, whether it's the six months or a year or the future residents, and everything that happens has to be done through a filter that reflects all of the community's desires and best interests as well as the investment desires and economic benefits. And, you know, we had a long process. It's, you know, the Town Center Plan is 13, 14 years in the process to get to in place since 2008 June. Really? Okay, I'm done. No, I'll be quick. You know, it's, it's really a two-part equation. Development standards, which as the Town Center Plan says, is kind of guidelines, collaborative, give and take, trying to come up with something that fits the community, its look, its feel, its future. And I commend Majestic for doing that. They've shown some willingness. I think that the general intent of the plan was to have open spaces, to open these courtyards, to allow that, I think, is a great concession. There, you know, I can think of Santa Barbara, you know, walking through some of those where you have those type of courtyards and there's outdoor patios and coffee spots and restaurants that you usually can't get into, but they're, they're very nice. So I'm really encouraged on that part. But there was very little talk tonight about what I view as the bigger issue and that's the development standards. And those are hard and fast. You know, there's, as has been said repeatedly, three-story mixed use, 40-foot, 18 and two stories above that. To change and alter from that, I think is just a very huge veer off of what the general design intent, as was echoed by Boris when he came down and kind of gave a recap of how this all happened. You know, critical mass is important, but it's the community that creates critical mass in a vibrant community. It's not just the number of residences you have in an area. And, you know, to roughly build 40% of the planned condos in the Town Center in what's about 13% of the land, even if some of those are small lots, four stories, you add three stories of that, it won't be at the same scale. But that number of 250-ish, I can't remember the exact number in the Town Center Plan, goes tremendously higher. And I think we need to be careful in considering that because it, at the end of the day, as the applicant said, this is going to be a long process and a build-out over 20 years. We can't just be concerned about the first project. We have to look to the future and when it is built out and when everything is all said and done, there may not be a property owner that owns more than one property, but who's to say there's not a company bigger than Majestic in the wings waiting to see if something like this happens and they come in and make bids and buy all those properties and cobble together a bigger parcel. So, you know, I think, at the end of the day, I think we're partially there. But I think there's a lot of, a lot of work to be done.
Commissioner Denton.
Well, I'd like to agree with a fellow commissioner. I think that Majestic has done a really nice job of stepping in the right direction. The fact that you want, have moved up to about 23% open space, being able to walk through these courtyards from many different directions certainly makes it a lot airier, a lot more pedestrian-friendly internally, not just out on the sidewalk. And I think that's exciting. I can envision in those courtyards, as you pointed out there, it's either restaurants or coffee shops where people can meet and have coffee, much like people do in the harbor. The harbor has a great turnout for that. I think we're heading in the right direction with the architecture. I did a little research on some of the projects that were up in Anaheim that, that your architect had done. And I certainly agree with the public that I don't think that fits Dana Point at all in terms of the look and feel. I think this is heading toward more of a, kind of a Healdsburg-type of look and feel, which I think is kind of soft and yet very attractive and very upscale. The, the loading zones are a concern. You know, I'm not sure how or where, if they'll pull into the alley and offload for the businesses via the alley or where the materials for the restaurants will be delivered. And that is, that is a concern that I don't see a solution for yet. The, one thing was not spoke about this evening is the tandem spaces for the people living in the project. I think tandem spaces are still something that's a difficulty. And it's a difficulty only if the person who comes home late and has to leave early in the morning parks out on the street all night or parks someplace where we don't particularly want it. Whether we back in or we pull in, you know, I'm going to defer to Mr. Fowler. I think his facts are usually pretty spot-on. I don't think people can back up properly, as I've seen in Costco's parking lot, at any time. So whether you pull in and back out or back in and pull out, I think it's still got its problems. I, I still need some work on the rooftop patios in terms of how you're going to prevent or what's the steps to prevent the people from putting up some very large umbrellas to get out of the sun and start to make the top difficult for the neighbors to be able to, to, to get some viewing. However, maybe that's something that will come in the next pass. But I do want to encourage you to continue to listen, to continue to make the best-quality project that reflects the quality of Dana Point. And Dana Point is a quality city that does not deserve anything less than top of the mark. So that's my encouragement to you going forward to the next set of meetings.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Thank you. I want to start by saying that I am impressed with the changes that you've made in the plan. I think it's a really great start. I really like the open public access through the courtyards, the enliven of the courtyards, the possibility of the restaurant dining can occur there. That's really exciting and I'm really glad you did that. I, I do have a couple of questions. One thing I want to say too about architecture on kind of that same line is that I like the softening of the colors. I think that went a long way to help. Though, from this distance, I can't really. And that, I can see that softened colors, and it's a wash, but anyway, I think that's a direction that's good. I also agree with my commissioner, fellow commissioners, about the loading zones. I would like to see onsite loading, and I think that that's a legitimate, legitimate for this project to provide, especially for the trash, for other loading and deliveries. And I think that you already addressed that the trash circulation will be internal and not on the, on the streets, on the public sidewalks, but I can see it's internal to the courtyard. I think that's something different. One thing I'd like to have explained to me, and I don't expect it tonight, but before the next meeting, I'd like to have an answer to the FAR question that the community raised. Is there a limit to FAR in the town center? And then how, if there is or isn't, how is it calculated? I'd like to understand that. Concerning the rooftop deck, you know, we do have a quiet town, and we kind of, we like our quiet town. We do want to enliven it, but just not after 10 o'clock, I think is how we kind of feel about it. Maybe not Hennessy's, but, so maybe consideration of a condition of approval as to a time limit to the rooftop deck and no amplified music, that might help. I think there already is a condition about a limit to 42 inches, and, which would not have an overhead trellis, as was shown in the last plan. And I think that might handle that rooftop deck if those conditions on noise and, I feel better about that. I would like, I really would like a massing study. What we, you know, the storyboards, you know, the story poles went up, and, you know, it showed up in the staff report as photographs of lines going across, and I think that this is enough of a concern of the community that that should be fleshed out more. And I would like to see the massing of the building, especially to the adjacent properties and the adjacent structures, so that we really, truly understand what it is this is going to look like. And then concerning the fourth-story element, you know, my charge is to come up, I have to make the findings for variance. And one thing about limiting it to three stories and not doing four stories, it does reduce the massing of the building. At least that's my impression it would, reduce the massing of the building and give variation to the roof line. And I think rather than a block of 40-foot building block, it would give some relief to that. And that, you know, that's why I want a massing study. I want to, I want to understand that. Concerning the angled parking, I know it is part of this project because it's shown on this project, but I live in an area of the city of Dana Point that underwent tremendous change, and I think the Lantern District is going, is going through tremendous change. We're doing two-way traffic on Pacific Coast Highway, changing Del Prado, and I see this back-end parking just adding to the stress of getting used to all these different circulation patterns. I am supportive of angled parking, and if it really is about the same number of parking spaces, and I don't, really don't see, other than striping, how it really changes if you did angle in and then switched it to back-in. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, I'm not sure, hard to tell. But that's my concern about the back-end parking, that it's just one added circulation change that the whole, you know, all the community has to get used to. And maybe we can do it, I'm just saying, it's adding change after change after change is stressful to the community. I know it was in our community. So let me just check my notes really quick. I think, I think that sums it up. I think that Majestic should be complimented again for a thoughtful effort, and I think you really are going in a positive direction.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitaker. Now it's my turn, I guess. I agree with my fellow commissioners on some of the things. I won't go over everything, but a lot of comments I already made about like the paseos, I really like that. I'm glad you reduced the height so there's no variance. I agree with Commissioner Denton regarding tandem parking. I think there were only six. No, there are three. Okay, that's good. I still, I'm sorry, Brad, I still disagree with the rear-angle parking. I'm with Commissioner Whitaker on this one. You know, it's enough stress on our community, and if we're, I like angle parking, you know, but I don't think we need the rear angle, yeah, rear back-end angle parking. I do like the new architectural features. It is a big improvement. I think it's less institutional, and it has more warmth and more visual appeal. And I know your past designs had some loading and delivery areas, and I hope you, you know, continue to carry that over to kind of address some of our issues with loading and unloading. And then lastly, I'd like to just thank everyone who has come out to all these meetings and visited with us and given us your input. It's very helpful. You know, we, we all have the same common purpose of making Dana Point a more beautiful place. We just disagree sometimes on how to go about it, but we can do that in a respectful way, and I think we did that this evening, and I just want to say thank you to everyone for conducting yourselves well. And thank Majestic also for listening to our town and taking in consideration our thoughts and feelings in your development. And that's all for us. I mean, as far as Commissioner comments, now we just need a motion to continue. Any commissioners want to volunteer? Commissioner Denton?
Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this to September 8th.
I'll second that.
All right. The motion was made by Commissioner Denton, seconded by Commissioner Whitaker. All in favor?
And confirmed that we will continue it to this location.
Oh, and continue to this location, so you can come visit us again here. All in favor, say aye, and that motion passes for with Chairwoman Claus absent, or not absent, refusing herself. We still have our meeting to conduct, so when you're exiting, please be a little bit more quiet. All right. New business? We have no new business. Order? I'm still trying to conduct.
Lynn, we're still meeting.
It's not going to work. All right, staff reports?
There are none.
None?
Nothing.
None, all right. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Whitaker? Commissioner Denton? Nothing. Commissioner Newkirk? Nothing. Okay, and I have none, so we will adjourn. The next regular meeting of the Planning Commission will be held on Monday, September 8th, 2014, beginning at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter in Dana Point Community Center Gym, located at 34052 Del Abyspo in our beautiful seaside town of Dana Point, California. Good night.